Pretty quick.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I've got two additions I'd like you to consider adding to the agenda. I sent them both out by email this past couple of days. The first one is approval of a joint task force agreement, and the second is revised E S S L and sick leave policy. If you're comfortable, just add them at the end of new business, so seventeen point one and seventeen point two.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve the agenda with the additions. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Implication from the Harvest Mission Fellowship.
I don't see any.
If you're not in attendance, this will have a moment of silence. Next, a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anyone have anything? Ready public comment? If there's anybody that wants to adjust, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Area approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve those minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody puts an offer discussion. A is approval of the two thousand twenty-four license renewals. B is approval of the two thousand twenty-four duplication schedule. C is approval of issuing caterers permit to J and L L Enterprises Two on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-four at the Hutchinson Event Center. D is reappointment of Don Martinez to the Hutchinson Utilities Commission to December of two thousand twenty-eight. E is claims appropriation and contract payments. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve consent agenda. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Motion carries. We do have a public hearing, but we'll skip down on some under communication process implications. No unfinished business. Under new business, we have a resolution number one five six six nine adopting the two thousand twenty-four City of Hutchinson fee schedule. Justin, you handle on this one?
I am.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Gary said, we're here to approve the two thousand twenty-four fee schedule that's in front of you now. We did come forward with a preliminary fee schedule back in late October, and there's been a few modifications after some more discussion, communication with the different department directors. So all the changes that are made from two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four are in red. If you guys have any questions, we're more than happy to answer. Otherwise, we wouldn't ask for you to approve the two thousand twenty-four fee schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve that fee schedule. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution number one five six eight zero, resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-four Comprehensive Plan Position Classification Table and Pay Grid Effectiveness One One Two Thousand Twenty-four.
Evening, Mayor and Council. You get to see a lot of me tonight. For the first one, this is our two thousand twenty-four compensation plan, including the classification table and pay grid. Oh, that's just the action form. Excuse me. Will, you have it in front of you, hopefully. Sorry.
Bye, Mike.
What is in front of you tonight is similar to what you've seen in prior years. There's a couple of red line updates, the biggest of which is just an administrative adjustment to change when an anniversary increase goes into place. So instead of being exactly on the anniversary, it'll go into effect the pay period following, which is consistent with what we do for annual pay increases, for the performance increases. The big topic of conversation, of course, is the grid shift of six percent for two thousand twenty-four, which is a cumulative number for the one percent catch-up, which we're seeing from last year, and then a five percent shift for two thousand twenty-four. The biggest piece of information, so in the compensation plan, we go through a list of all the different metrics and data that we use to consider, the wage committee considers. And one of the things that was added for this year, which we have used the past couple of years but wasn't formally documented on here, was the Keystone Compass, which is an annual report that our compensation consultant gives us each year and goes through each kind of of the sectors and public administrations on there. So for two thousand twenty-four, they're recommending a, I think, five percent shift. Was it five and a half percent shift? And we were looking to do the one percent catch-up from two thousand twenty-three with that data that was updated from that Keystone Compass, and then that adjustment for what is recommended for twenty-four.
I think, sorry, Kelly, I just want to interject. A lot of times this comes up, and that doesn't mean that every employee gets out of max six percent. What we're doing is you're taking the grid and you're shifting it basically to the right by six percent. So your minimum pay, your midline pay, and your max pay all get shifted to the positive, if you want to say, by six percent. Ultimately, employees receive, you know, increases based off of their performance. The only ones that this would directly impact could be anybody who would fall below the eighty percent. They'd receive an automatic adjustment, which there might be two or three, I think, employees that fall in that.
Well, here for.
It actually is, I mean, six percent sounds a little misleading, but it's actually a fair way to not ever, like you said, get six. So it benefits kind of lower grades.
Yes.
So than the upper grades, so people don't think.
In my mind, I think it's the easiest way for us to stay with the market so we don't find ourselves fifteen, twenty percent behind, because every year we're looking at the grid, and that's what's being shifted. It's not everybody's wages. You still have to perform, and that's still going to be determined by your supervisor on how you do that. But really keep, make sure that our wage scale hopefully stays up with the market. And as you may recall, and for those who are new, every five years, we do a full-blown market analysis. And so this is really to help us stay in line between year one and year six when we do those studies.
Sixty thousand dollar increase.
One of the other things that you'll note, the classification table has a couple of updates on there. The biggest note would be one of our Creekside positions that moved up a grade based on some adjusted responsibilities. And then there were a few title adjustments for that grid. Any questions for me for the two thousand twenty-four compensation plan? No? All right, then I would ask for your approval.
Make a motion to approve it as presented. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Updating N A C of Paid Uncalled Firefighters Compensation Plan as previously adopted in the resolution number one five five four five.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The information that was in your packet regarding this, just to give you a little bit of history behind that, this is specifically for the on-call fire officers, not for the firefighters. So backing up a couple of years, when Brenda was still here, actually, in twenty-one, we finally put on paper kind of how the structure was laid out. And then when Kelly came on, we kind of defined, enhanced that, defined that, and got it laid out. And then there was a specific scale that we wanted to kind of keep. So just, so this is the, for the on-call fire officers, that have a take-home vehicle, they're on a rotation. Each fire officer's on it for a week at a time. And that scale is broken down from the assistant chief position is at one pay rate, the battalion chiefs, there's two of those, they're at a different pay rate, and the lieutenants, there's four of those, they're at another pay rate. So over time, backing up ten years, there was a huge disparity between those numbers from the assistant chief to the lieutenants. And we've kind of equalized a lot of responsibilities, so we tried to squeeze those numbers back together. And then most recently, just tried to kind of move it up every couple of years to stay on pace with where we believe the pay should be for those. So what you're seeing in front of you is a correction, is that the right word? A correction to retroactive this to two thousand twenty-three, and then this will be the same number again moving forward in two thousand twenty-four. And I would like a note on there, too. You see there's an assistant lieutenant position. That is a new position that we're starting this year. It's basically a, it's allowing us to take veteran firefighters that want to be officers. It's a one-year temporary spot. They have to apply for it. They have to meet all the qualifications, and it allows them to get their feet wet, going on call shadowing other officers, taking some call responsibility, just so they kind of know what they're getting into if they want to be an officer. And it also makes them think more tactically and objectively on fire scenes, so that if, when their one-year term is done, it'll be reopened up again every year. So this will be a revolving door for on purpose. So we're trying to, you know, build up kind of our pool of veteran firefighters that are able to step into the next officer positions, when we've got a few retirements coming up in a couple of years, as always. So we're just trying to stay ahead of that curve and make sure that we have qualified staff that are ready to step into that position as soon as they become available. So that's what that, specifically that assistant lieutenant position is, so.
Mike, why don't you, just for the general public's knowledge, kind of describe, like, your hours are set hours, and then the on-call firefighter takes it at night until the next day when you come on.
Yep. So I'm at the station Monday through Friday. I'm actually on call from six a.m. to five p.m. every day, Monday through Friday. So the on-call officer starts at five p.m., they go to six o'clock the next morning, and then on the weekends, they're on twenty-four hours Saturday, twenty-four hours on Sunday. And that's the rotation. So they have to have that on-call vehicle. They have to be in it or near it at all times, and they're responding directly to the scene, whatever it is, that may come up during that time.
So is that, Mike, if they're like, just so the public knows, if they're to be in that vehicle, do they use it for transportation so someone doesn't go, what are they doing, driving around, you know?
Yeah, exactly. If they're, that's a good, that's a good point. If, you know, if they're going to the store to get a gallon of milk, they have, they have to be in that vehicle, and they have to be ready to go. So that's how it works, so.
Mike, now, for this has been quite some time that you've done this route where that officer responds directly to the scene instead of going to the station. And we've calculated, it saves us thousands of dollars every year, because in the past, as you may recall, there'd be a phone call. Everybody go to the fire station, they go out and realize, oh, either false alarm, or we only needed one vehicle. And I don't know how long you guys have been doing this for, but this is really a method to save money.
Yeah, I mean, the rough calculation, I think we're in that twenty thousand dollars a year plus savings. But ultimately, it just, it allows the other firefighters just to stay at work, at home, whatever they're doing. And we run about a hundred and, about a hundred and fifty officer-only calls, so that one officer is taking that one call a hundred percent on their own. And we've got some basic equipment in there, you know, medical equipment. We also have gas detection, CO detection, so they're able to do those non-emergent calls on their own. So that's the purpose of it as well. Any other questions? So I guess the, what's in front of you then is just for approval of that change to the appendix of the compensation plan.
Motion to approve, resolution one five five four five.
I'll second it. Motion by Pat, second by myself, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mike. Enterprise funds. Andy, should we do these one at a time, I would think, right?
Well, I'll go through them all, and then you can approve them all at one time, if you'd like to do it that way. I think that's how we've done it in prior years.
Sure. It's really up to, I mean, we have it set up to where if you want to do a motion to do A through F, you can do that. Or if you want to take them individually, it's really, we've had councils.
Yeah.
Do a whole way, and I said Andy will go through them all, and then you guys can make a determination at the end of that, so.
Is that, is that fine with you guys? Just say have Andy go through it all, and all right. Go ahead, Andy.
All right. So we've had a workshop for the enterprise funds back in the end of November, and then Matt also touched on it a little bit at the Truth and Taxation meeting. So the budgets I have in front of you tonight changed just a little bit based on employee open enrollment options with the health and dental plans. So that's the only change, and they were minor. So just wanted to get that out of the way. I'm not going to go through these budgets in too much detail, but if there's something you want me to touch on a little more, just stop me, and I'd be happy to. So I'm kind of going to go through it more in a summary format. So starting with the liquor fund, we're looking at a net loss of about a hundred and six thousand dollars there. And that's simply due to some higher expenditures, especially capital outlay for this year than we had last year. We're looking at eighty-five thousand dollar increase in the capital outlay. We do have a new revenue sales item for the year, THC-infused products. That's adding seventy-two thousand of revenue. Other than that, some minor adjustments to some of the other sales categories as well. So what I really wanted to go through tonight, since we had a question at the Truth and Taxation meeting about why our enterprise funds are losing money and how does it work, I wanted to focus on this bottom section here, taking our net loss down to our cash flow. So depreciation, as we've talked about, is a non-cash entry within our books. We're essentially deferring expense over the useful lives of our capital assets. So for the liquor fund, we're recording fifty-eight thousand of expense up in the P and L, but there's no cash outlay associated with it. So we have to back it out of our net loss to come down to the true net change in cash for the year of about, just a little over, I'm sorry, a little under forty-eight thousand dollars. But then we have some non-operating items that I want to speak to, capital outlay and transfers out. Those really aren't operating expenses. So if we back those out of the equation, we truly have a cash provided by operations of six hundred and two thousand, which is very healthy. It allows us to put money aside for capital outlays, and it allows us to transfer monies to the general fund. So when people just see that negative, yeah, it's easy to ask, why, what's going on? You're losing money. But really, we're generating six hundred and two thousand of cash within this fund before some of our non-operating expenses. And then we're looking to end the year with a cash balance of about three hundred and eighty thousand. So this fund's using a little bit of its cash reserves to address some of those capital needs, and that's going to be a theme throughout all of these enterprise funds that I show you tonight.
I think that's the important thing to highlight. You know, we build up fund balances so you can pay for cash when you need to make those major improvements, I would say. Obviously, not everyone's budget is their house the same way, but it'd be no different that you're saving up money for roof replacement or reciting. We do the same things, too. So in one year, you may look like, well, you're losing money. Well, we plan for that deficit. So we're using that money to make an improvement to that facility.
Right. We'll move on to the water fund. Similar, we're looking at a substantial loss. It looks at least of about one point one million loss, just based on our revenues and expenditures. But when we look at our cash flow, we back out that depreciation. We're actually, we actually have a positive cash flow. One of the few funds that's going to have a positive cash flow for the year, thirteen thousand seven hundred or so. And then after those non-operating expenditures, we've generated just under one point zero nine million of cash from operations. So very healthy operations. We look to end the year with about four point seven million in the bank, which according to our minimum target balance is probably twice what we need, which gives us the flexibility, as Matt said, to get to some of those capital projects. Waste water fund, similar. We're looking at about a two point five million dollar net loss on the year. But as we get through those calculations on the bottom, we're looking at one point two million of cash from operations. And then even though we do have, we're dipping into our cash reserves by about one point three million in the green bar, we should end the year with about six point two million dollars of cash in the bank. Stormwater fund, net loss of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that's after a three percent rate increase up in the revenues. Net change in cash for the year, negative hundred and fourteen thousand, and that's due to those larger-than-normal capital outlays once again. Cash from operations, add a little over three hundred and fifty-two thousand. Expect to end the year with a cash balance of about a million thirty-four thousand. Refuge fund, a net loss on the year is expected at about nine hundred and sixty-three thousand. And that's after having a rate increase, first rate increase since two thousand and eight. You can see that up in the revenue section, added about sixty-eight thousand of revenue. As we get down to the bottom and reconcile this to cash, we are dipping into our cash reserves by the tune of about seven hundred and ninety-one thousand. Those are planned capital expenditures. Our cash provided from operations in the blue, eighty-one thousand. Just want to kind of speak to that briefly here. Without that five percent rate increase, we'd be at about a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar positive cash from operations. So that kind of illustrates the need for a rate increase within this fund. We'd be getting close to cash neutral in our operations, and that doesn't even really provide enough, eighty-one thousand, really doesn't provide enough for capital outlays. So we'd be dipping into our reserves unless we change rates or adjust rates here in the next year or two as well. But we expect to end the year with a healthy cash balance of eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And then finally, the compost fund, looking to end the year with a net loss of three hundred and seven thousand roughly. And you can see up in the revenues, we're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar decrease, and I think Matt touched on this prior. We did lose one of our larger customers, but we did backfill with the bulk product with our bitcon being available for sale again in two thousand twenty-four. We didn't have it for two thousand twenty-three sales, so that helped mitigate some of that lost revenue from that larger customer. So we've got that net loss of about three hundred and eight thousand at the bottom. We back out our depreciation. This fund's a little unique since it's a manufacturing operation. I've included this cost of goods markup. So we mark up our costs to hopefully absorb some of our administrative costs, and that comes out as a cost of good expenditure, but it's really not a cash item. We're just marking up our inventory costs. So I'm backing out about seventy thousand. This is kind of an estimate, but, so that's actually in addition to our cash flow, since it's another non-cash entry in our books. So we're expected to end the year with a positive cash flow of about fifty-two thousand. So the compost fund and the water fund, the only two with positive cash flows for the year. And then compost fund down at the bottom there, cash from operations, a little over three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, which despite losing a large customer is fairly healthy yet. And we expect to end the year with about two point two million in the bank. This one's a little busy. I wanted to show it to you, just so you can kind of see the extent of our enterprise funds. This is all six of them consolidated. We're looking at almost two point two, or I'm sorry, twenty-two million in revenues, just a little over twenty-seven million in expenditures, so all combined, and a net loss of about five point three million. And we kind of explained that net loss due to depreciation and some capital items. But down in this middle box, you can see, we spoke to the cash reconciliation in all of the funds separately, but in total, we're looking at a little over three point seven million of cash generated from operations, and then we're dipping into our reserves by about two point one million or so. But this bottom section, I thought, maybe you guys want to see that, too. Now I'm really kind of getting into some fun stuff. But this kind of speaks to the depreciation that we're talking about, and the level of depreciation in these funds. We have almost a hundred and seventeen million of depreciable assets on our books for these enterprise funds, and we're at about fifty-seven percent depreciated through the end of two thousand twenty-two, which isn't too bad. You know, we're a little over our halfway life of our assets. But these items in red down here, especially machinery and vehicles, you can see we're actually at a hundred percent depreciated in refuse on the vehicles. But we're getting up there in the eighty, seventy-nine, eighty percent range, which just tells us we're going to be seeing capital expenditures coming here in the next several years to replace our aging fleet, and then addressing some of the aging buildings as well, and refuges and compost, and water. So that kind of speaks to some of these improvements that you're seeing within our budget as well, using some of our reserves. So that's all I had for the enterprise fund. I'd be happy to answer any questions or open it up for discussion. Or any fund that somebody wants Andy to touch on a little more?
I think the only one I had a question on was the refuse fund, because that, you know, it's a little tighter, eighty-one thousand in the cash and capital, and seeing if they're looking at any capital asset expenditures here in the next couple of years that.
Yeah, I think I can get down to that. Oh, you know what? I don't have my forecast in here. But this year's big because they're addressing that source-separated project that we've been trying to complete over the last three years. We've chipped away a little bit at it after the last year, but I think once we get through two thousand twenty-four, then it's just kind of the normal standard capital that we may need to wheel order here or there, some minor equipment. The refuse fund doesn't have a lot of equipment, to tell you the truth.
Did you see if that was kind of the norm?
Yeah, that's more on the, the compost fund has more of the heavy equipment at Creekside. So we shouldn't see a substantial amount of capital expenditures in the refuse fund going forward.
That's the only question I have.
I said, council, it's in front of you tonight. If you wanted to, you could do a resolution to approve all the enterprise funds, or you could take them one by one. It's purely under the desire of the council.
And make a motion to approve all of the enterprise fund budgets?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve resolution one five six seven zero through one five six seven five. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Andy.
We are at six o'clock.
All right. Public hearing, issuing on-sale intoxicating liquor license to the Wine Lounge LLC, DVA Wine Lounge located at Eight Main Street South.
Mayor and council, we have, as some of you may have heard, we do have a new establishment that is coming into town, and they're going to be locating in, which I believe was the Green Pastures. Green Pastures building. Unless is that correct, what it used to be called? But one of our requirements by city ordinance is that anytime there is a request for a new liquor license, there, we do conduct a, a public hearing before considering issuing that. So that is what is in front of us tonight for consideration, so.
Shouldn't that be Main Street and north?
That's what I was thinking, too.
Because it's on the north side of Washington.
Sure.
Trying to think if it's Washington or first, uh...
Washington.
Yeah, Michael Fireman, right?
Go, go, Dan.
All right.
So mayor, unless anybody had any specific questions, I would open up for any public comments on the license.
We'll open, open the public hearing for a public comment.
You want to say anything? As long as you're here.
Are just appreciative of your consideration, and, and we're excited to be part of the Hutchinson City Committee.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion carries. Need a motion?
Yeah, we should have a formal motion then to, I would assume approach.
Motion license for, I found it by master, Wine Lounge located at 8 North Main Streets, Hutchinson.
I will second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve that license. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All righty, moving on. Resolution number 15676, resolution adopting the 2024 general fund budget.
All right, back to the good stuff, huh? I only get this one time a year. So Matt's done a good job with the, the various budget workshops and the truth and taxation meetings. So I wasn't intending to go through the general fund budget in too much detail. I put a lot of the, the main points on the board action form as to what was driving our budget this year. In summary, we're looking at a 9% tax levy increase in the general fund to balance our budget. That's down from a 12% preliminary levy in September. We saw some LGA increases, but one big thing that kind of affects our budget this year, the net isn't too bad of an impact. It's actually a savings, but our hospital security program going away. The net result is a savings of about 28 grand on our budget, but you'll see a substantial amount of revenue coming out and a substantial amount of expense coming out. And in fact, it kind of distorts our wages and benefits category where it looks like we have a 3.7% increase in the, in the wages and benefits. But if we hadn't pulled out hospital security, we'd be looking at about a 7.8% increase in that wages and benefits category. So that hospital security change kind of skews things. 6% inflationary shift as Kelly had with her compensation plan, that's factored in here. And then we increased our fleet funding by 25,000. So that is now up to 400,000 funding from the general fund into our equipment replacement fund. And our annual needs are approximately at about 600,000 a year in that fleet fund. So we're, we're closing the gap, getting closer. And we'll speak to that more when we get to the five-year budget. But essentially, we're looking at a balanced budget with that 9% tax levy increase. Our, our revenues and expenditures are both at 14,889,400. And those are both 3.7% increases from the prior budget. And then this is a sheet that we looked at, at the truth and taxation. Matt showed this as well. I thought I would show it again. You can see down at the bottom, we're at about that 9% increase in the general fund, 2.8% in the debt fund, overall 7.2% city tax levy. And then we have the two special taxing districts below that, the HRA, that gets us to the total 7.1% total tax impact for the year. Here's our tax impact for the year. The green column is what we're proposing tonight. You can see that amounts to that 7.2% tax levy increase, and then that results in about a half a percent increase to our tax rate. And then as we follow this down towards the median home value, if, if this median home value saw an increase from 230,000 value last year to 250,000 value this year, they would see about a $131 increase to their city taxes. And if this was the preliminary, what we saw at the preliminary levy, 12%, and this option two essentially would be a break even on our tax, tax rate, where it would be unaffected. And to get there, we would have to cut about 90,000 out of our tax levy as it sits with our proposed option number three. Wanted to kind of highlight some of what we do with our five-year forecast, because we show this to you every year, and then most years we fall lower than what we've been projecting. But this was our projection from last year's budget cycle, where we projected a 5.5% increase in our tax levy for 2024. And this projection assumes an annual increase in our health premiums at 7.5%. That's kind of an average we've used for several years now, and we've been pretty lucky to fall under that many years. But this year, we're at 25%. So to fill that gap from the seven and a half to 25%, that's about a 3.1% tax levy impact. So you add that to the equation. Just in a simplistic look at this, we would be at 8.6% if our forecast had included a 25% health premium increase. So we're not too far off from where we're at, we're at with the, with that 9% levy increase. So as we look forward to 2024, you know, it doesn't look too bad, I'm sorry, for 2025, doesn't look too bad at 4.8, but I just want to point out that our, my forecast removes the event center operations after 2024. So there's no impact from, from the event center operations, which is running over $100,000 deficit each year. So without the event center factored in, we would see about a 4.8% based on these assumptions levy increase. But if for some reason the event center is still in our books and still operational, we'd be looking at a 6.7% tax levy increase for 2025. And then you can see the years out, the tax levy fluctuates, fluctuates from 5.8 to 7.4%. And some of those years fluctuate a little bit because of the election years. When we have an election year, every other year, we add expense to the budget, and then we remove the expense in a non-election year. So there's some fluctuation there, but yeah, that 2025, we could see some help on our levy with, with the event center operations.
Andy, do we have an, I should know this, but do we have an agreement with the hospital in regards to the event center purchase?
There is a, there is a, right now, we have an intent to purchase as a, more or less as a first rate of refusal and...
A date, is there, Matt?
Yeah, we actually go through the end of the year, and so we're going to revisit that. And that's actually a conversation I had with Lynn yesterday, is okay, where are we at with it? Because we were supposed to have the kind of response from them in August, and we're still sitting here, so. I still believe that we'll have a decision here in 2024, or otherwise we'll be looking to go probably out to the market selling that building, unless we change our mind, so.
Indoor pick a bone.
So I guess showing the, we show you the five-year forecast every year. Hopefully, we come in lower than these, and a lot of times we do. It just depends what happens throughout the year. And that health premium, that's a big bogey that we just never know. But, you know, this was the first year where we really got bit and came in higher than we forecast. So one year out of 12 for me here, that's not too bad. Any questions on the general fund budget?
No.
If not, I, okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion carries. Resolution number 15677, resolution adopting the 2024 general fund and debit service final tax levy.
All right. We have a series of levies here, and I thought I would just throw this up again. We just saw it previously, but it shows all the different levies that we'll be going through here. This is an item that we're talking about in here, the general fund and the debt funds. 9% general fund levy increase, 2.8% debt, debt levy, and then overall 7.2%. So for the general fund, there's actually two components to it. We have our typical operations, which we're budgeting the levy at 6,333,436. Then we also have a tax abatement subsidy for Upanor, and that's 25,000. So those are your two components for the general fund. And then below that, we have our, our various debt service funds. That first grouping is what we call our special assessment bonds. Those, those bonds also have special assessments from property owners helping to pay the annual debt service. What we're showing you here is just what the city needs to kick in from our debt levy. And then down below that, we have some other geo-bonds, not special assessments, but some CIP facility bonds. That's for the police facility, and then some tax abatement and street reconstruction bonds as well. And those, the debt levy totals 2,477,487. That's what we need to make our debt service payments next year. That brings our total levy to 8,835,923, and that's what I ask for you to approve tonight.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion carries. Resolution number 15678, resolution adopting the 2024 HRA final tax levy.
All right. The HRA and the EDA, which follows, are both special taxing districts, so that means there's state statute that limits our tax levy that can be set with these two districts. And that, that maximum is based on the estimated market value within the city. So you can see in the middle of this page, there's a calculation. Our estimated market value of the city is just over 1.5 billion dollars. And for the HRA, the factor is at .000185. So the maximum levy for the HRA for next year is 278,410, but the HRA Board is requesting only 165,000 for their levy. And I guess that's what I ask for you to approve for the HRA levy for 2024.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion carries. Resolution number 1567, and resolution adopting the 2024 EDA final tax levy.
Okay, similar to the HRA, they have that maximum per state statute, which calculates to a total of 272,842, and that's what the EDA Board is requesting for their 2024 tax levy.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion carries. Five-year capital improvement plan.
All right. I know I put a lot more detail in the agenda item. Hopefully, you had a chance to go through it. I'm, I'm just going to kind of go through some, some key points, in my opinion, with the, with the capital plan, just going through these bullet points. But the CIP, as Matt has talked about, i- is a fluid document. It's, it's updated several times each year. The projects are reviewed by the various committees. We have the facility committee, the fleet committee, resource allocation committee, and then also we have departments that contribute to the, to the capital plan as well. And it's not uncommon for the committees to adjust the project timing. Ultimately, it's the funding source or the funding, which is the major factor in determining whether a project gets completed. And then outside monies, opportunities for outside monies, that may help address a project earlier than originally planned. But I kind of wanted to speak to this next point with, you know, we, we, we look at the five-year plan, and it looks like there's money out there for projects. There's really no money appropriated for those future projects until they're approved. That's, that's what's triggering the appropriation. So they're essentially earmarked, and some of that is because that future money might not even be there. LGA funds a lot of our capital projects. So if for some reason LGA is cut, that means some of those projects get slid back or don't happen when they, when we have them planned to be happening. So the appropriation is really when things are approved. And I wanted to point out that projects aren't approved simply by being on this plan. We actually have that in the five-year, the capital plan policy, and we try to stress that with the staff, too. It's not approved simply by being on this plan. This plan is a planning document, and what's on there are recommendations. These are recommendations from facility committee, fleet committee. Ultimately, a lot of it comes back to you guys to consider. If it's over 50,000, it requires your approval. So you're going to see those. You'll have an opportunity to talk about them and discuss them before approving or denying. And then any projects under 50,000 would require city administrator approval. But there's been some projects that move, and I know, Pat, you had the question of, you know, projects kind of seeming like it's being escalated. Well, we, we've done that before, too. It's not uncommon. The Civic Arena project, that actually got delayed. The top section is projects that essentially got delayed. We had it on the books, on the plan for 2012, that rink roof, and it didn't get done till this year. The aquatic center on the plan for 2012 got done about four years later. Rec Center and the Civic Arena parking lot got done five years later than we had planned. Tennis courts, Roberts Park lighting, that was on the 2010 plan, still not done. So that kind of speaks to how some of this stuff gets moved around based on priorities, and those are based on kind of the recommendations of, of the facility committee and, and the funding that's available to them. That bottom half, that's projects that have been pushed up, kind of the alternative. Cashwise Roundabout back in 2019, that wasn't on any of our plans, but I believe we got federal funding for, for, to complete that and tie it round about, so that pushed it up to a feasible project. Civic Arena refrigeration project got done a year earlier because of some, I think, some issues getting it operational that one year. And then we had some land purchases by the fire hall and city hall here that weren't on the plan. So I guess what I'm trying to communicate here is, yeah, we have a plan, and the plan is good, but sometimes things don't always go to plan. Opportunities pop up, donations pop up, other funding pops up, and then we have to jump on those opportunities at some times. But that's all going to come to you guys for final decision-making. And then I threw together this sheet that's in, in your packet that shows how LGA is being used to fund the various plants we have, that facility plan that I mentioned, the playground replacement plan, miscellaneous infrastructure maintenance plan, and then some undesigned, almost 200 undesigned LGA goes into our capital projects fund. And this year, for the first time, we're looking to carve that 50,000 out to the fleet funding. So that's a look at how...
Andy, I just want to highlight, especially for the public, when they may hear local government aid, and how does that impact Hutchinson? We lay it out pretty clearly, I, I think, for the public to show, you know, what we take, it's going to be, what is our total? It's going to be just over 3 million. We're putting half of that into our general fund, so that means that's paying for the day-to-day operations of the city. So that's helping pay for police, fire, administration, HR, legal, you name it, anybody who's in the general fund, he's paid for that. The other half, we're signing for capital projects, so that's your facilities, your roads. We lay out here, you know, playground equipment. So we try to be as transparent as we can of this is where that, that aid that we get from the state... the state is going. And then there's other aids like, now, it's the road maintenance aid that we get from the state that goes directly towards roads as well. But when it comes to actual local government aid, we try to make it as transparent to the public to show, this is what it's paying for, and when it goes up and when it goes down, that's what it's gonna impact.
So I've given some information on the various plans here. I'm not gonna go through it in detail, but it shows you how the committees look at things and how money's being used. The one I wanted to hit on, because I know, Tim, you had a question last week on whether we're putting money away for the ladder truck. This bottom section shows our five- and ten-year look at our fleet replacement, and we're looking at, on average, over the five years, about five hundred, a little over five hundred thousand in needs. And with the action taken tonight, we increased our fleet funding by twenty-five thousand out of the general fund and another fifty out of the LGA. That brings us up to four fifty total funding, which is helping us bridge that gap. If we didn't have that hundred and fifty that council approved, I'm sorry, seventy-five thousand that council approved tonight in the various actions, we would be down at three seventy-five yet funding, and that gap, that funding gap would still be fairly large for our vehicles and equipment replacements. But this kind of gives you the picture, you know, to carve money away to the ladder truck would be, it'd be a drop in the bucket from what we need, because anything we take out of here would be minor, and then it might put pressure on other replacements. And at the end of the day, whatever little funding we could pull out of here wouldn't be a whole lot compared to the ladder truck. But we are looking at some other alternatives. I know that Wood Seth gentleman who was here last week talked about grants for fire trucks, so we'll be looking at grants, and I think it'll be a kind of a three-pronged attack with that ladder truck. I think you'll be seeing cash reserves.
Mayor, Council, and I do want to highlight, too, is that when, back in fifteen, when I actually started, that gap was closer to, I think, seven hundred thousand. So you can see what we've done in nine years. I think we were at a hundred and twenty-five thousand in funding or something like that, a hundred and fifty, and now we're up to... So we've been slowly addressing that. We had really good years with interest rates, and so we borrowed, I think, four hundred and five hundred thousand to kind of take a big chunk out of that. And so just to let the council know that some of these things take some time. Like I said, we were looking at a seven hundred thousand dollar gap now that we've been able to trim down over those last nine years.
Right, and I did take the ladder truck out of this analysis, because that kind of skews things. So hopefully that gave you more information, and then in the packet as well, there's detail behind each of these plans, all the expenditures that have been made and are on the plan for the future. You know, with the playground funding, you can see since that started in two thousand twenty, we've had substantial donations, and that kind of escalates some of these projects to get done sooner. Miscellaneous infrastructure maintenance fund, you can see we dedicated over the course since two thousand fifteen, almost three point five million of LGA towards some of our miscellaneous infrastructure, which mainly roadways, preserving our roadways. And then the fleet, fleet plan. Oops. And that's just kind of a regurgitation of what I showed you on the previous slide with the fleet. But I guess that's all I had to go through, unless you guys want to actually go through any details of the plan itself, any of the projects, have questions or conversation.
I would make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve the five-year capital improvement plan. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Moving on to the added, uh... Seven point one, two thousand twenty-four Southwest Metro Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement.
I'll have Tom address the council on this request.
Good evening, Chief Gifferson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have in front of you is a request for approve or deny the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-eight Joint Powers Agreement for the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force. On the council action form, you'll see there was three minor changes to the JPA from previous years. The first one was just a minor change in the recital, basically required by, a requirement for the VSET grant, which funds part of the task force. Then the other two were just some minor language to clean up some responsibilities. That's essentially about it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Tom, maybe just once again explain who's all, go through who's all involved in the Southwest, which I guess government entities are a part of that.
I'll give it a shot.
At least the best we can, so...
Essentially, there's three counties, Scott County, Carver County, and McCloud County are, and then municipalities that are within those counties. All members, voting members, pay dues. They're in, if you see a copy of the JPA there, there's a table in there that addresses who pays what dues, based on population, and also whether or not they're a full member or just an associate member. If an entity provides an officer to be a part of the task force, they pay no dues, and that's what we do. We have an officer assigned to the task force, and that's part of our investigations unit. They are still supervised by Hutchinson P.D. They're just assigned to the drug task force. Actually, McCloud County also has an agent on the task force, so we're fortunate in that respect, especially when you figure population-wise, we have pretty good representation there.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, Pat to approve. Any other discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post aye. Motion carries. Seventeen point two, approve, updated sick leave and safe leave and sick leave policy.
Mayor and Council, thanks for adding this on the agenda tonight. This was kind of a last-minute scramble for staff. We may recall, we did approve this policy back in October, and just through some consultation, we realized that we needed to kind of separate the ESSL and the sick leave, and for some of you, you may say, well, what's the difference? And really, the difference is what's been adopted through state statute. And so when we had our original policy, it was all together, and we found that we had some potential liabilities for doing that and having to fall under all of the guidelines for ESSL. And so that's why we're asking you guys to... For the most part, it's the same policy, we just separated our sick policy from the ESSL to kind of protect the city from some of those liabilities, which basically means that if we had it together, everything would fall under the ESSL laws, which means if you had seven hundred and twenty hours of bank sick leave, you could potentially use all of that for ESSL. And so that's why we're looking for change. It's more or less just an administrative change for us, but we wanted to make sure, since we need to have an updated policy by the end of the year adopted, so... Anything I missed, Kelly?
No, we, one of the things that's important to note from the prior sick leave policy to what is in front of you, there aren't a huge lot of changes, but there's a couple things that we added to expand the usage of regular sick leave, which some of those were reflected in the ESST law, so separate, but still expanded so that people can use their sick leave, but it's not falling under the same legal protections of ESST, but that's still there.
This is gonna end up costing us money, isn't it? See how it can.
We already provide ninety-six hours of paid sick leave to our full-time employees. That's not changing. What we're going to do now is allow a cross-designation, up to forty-eight hours a year. We are being a little more flexible than some other entities are. Some are requiring that the first forty-eight hours of sick leave that you use in a year is designated as ESST. We're allowing a little bit of flexibility for employees to designate that throughout the year in the event that they use, you know, forty hours of sick leave at the beginning of the year on themselves, and then later in the year, they have a reason that falls under ESST that doesn't fall under sick leave, they're still able to utilize that. So we're not providing any additional leave to our full-time employees, but there is that cost for the seasonal, temporary, and our on-call firefighters.
That's probably our biggest impact, is though, seasonal, temporary, and on-call firefighters, which is just interesting, because it's on-call voluntary. And I think it's tough for us to really estimate, because how many, I think about most of our seasonal part-timers, most of our high school kids, they're looking to work and get money. And plus, you have to hit eighty hours before you can...
Use it.
So it's, yes, it's gonna impact this. It's just what, to what level, I don't think we know, I'll be honest. And just to be transparent with this council right now, I think our biggest impact, we will probably see two, three years down the road, when we may be coming to you saying, we have to hire more staff because...
The hours.
The hours, the people that are taking off. I think that, at the end of the day, that might be the biggest impact.
Right, which is the combination of the, you know, the sick leave laws that are in place and the increased vacation that we have put into place for employees, you know, listening, that that's important to them, and so, yeah, that will definitely, there'll be an impact.
They exempted elected officials, though.
They did exempt you all as elected officials, so...
We're worried about having to give you guys a sick leave, so...
So our salary will just be the same no matter for a second or night?
It'll be the same, yeah.
Think you lost your voice, Captain, here?
I'll make a motion to approve this policy. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the policy. Any other discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post aye. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
We do not have any reports or committee boards or commissions, so... Chief Gifferson, you got anything for us tonight? Mary? Mike Schuman, chief, you got anything for us?
No, I'd just like to thank Santa and his beautiful albert on the library to make their Saddle Fire Station a visit. Was your ride okay?
I would have liked to make another hot lap, or Santa would have, I guess.
Mike, we're talking about Santa's not here.
Yeah, what are you talking about? Who are you talking to?
That's all we have.
All right, thanks, Mike. Mr. Stifter, you have anything for us? Justin, you didn't talk too much. You got anything else?
I'm trying to keep it nice and short. Well done.
Andy?
No, nothing. You had an elf sweater on today. Maybe you wanted to wear it tonight, then.
We are employee potluck and ugly sweater day, so...
Kelly, you got anything else for us?
Just a reminder to return your review materials to me by next week.
Where can I get that, since I misplaced mine?
Would you like it electronic or do you want it in paper?
Well, she's, this begs my incompetence. She sent me one back. When I tried to get it, I couldn't, so Chad, I gotta count on you to get me yours.
I could sit you off. Believe it or not.
I'll make sure you get it.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Kelly. Mark, you got anything for us?
I know, I guess the only thing is, wish everyone a great Christmas.
All right. Chad, let's start with you.
Nothing extra, just have a great, nice holiday.
Tim?
Well, I put it out, but the, our city will be blessed with the Vietnam Memorial Traveling Wall this coming summer, from August twentieth, the week of that week, so there'll be plenty of events going on. That's a huge draw for communities. I know Sox Senators had it every other year because of the Eagle ceiling, now it draws a huge crowd to our community, so in honor of our Vietnam veterans, we decided to bring that in, and thanks to Dave Scuber for driving that effort and getting it, helping getting it here.
Mary? Okay, Dave, what do you got?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, all I have to say is a blessed Merry Christmas, and we'll definitely see you next year.
All right. Pat?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Matt, what do you have?
I think most of you remember, but we were supposed to meet next week, and we're not, so please don't show up on Tuesday. Our next council meeting is January ninth. And then just, this is kind of just more of a heads-up, next week with the garbage service, we have Christmas on Monday. It will be delayed one day that whole week with the holidays, so we usually like to try to remind everybody of that at this point, so that's...
Do we have to do the committee thing the first, or...
We'll do that our first meeting, just because we usually do that with election year. We're not in election year, so that will be our first meeting in January, where we'll point all those committees on, commissions, I guess. If there was, I suppose, we could put out, if there was any desire to change, let the mayor know, but that will be on your first meeting in January, so... That's it for me, so...
All righty, you know, talking to Matt the other day, and he kind of said something, and you know, it didn't really sink in, because he didn't hit me, get my attention. So I, he did mention that, he said, well, you know, staff updates, you're supposed to report on your committees, you said...
Council updates, so...
So maybe I'll just throw it over to Matt to explain what we're supposed to do, and then actually I got a little update on my committee's, or should I do mine and kind of...
I can share first, you know, this has come up a couple times, and I usually share, especially when new council members come on board, but one of the main purposes of why we have council-mayor update at the end of the agenda is really, it's for you guys to share some of what you do, which is great, but also what's going on in the various committees and commissions that you're sitting on. And I will say, very randomly, or very frequently does, or less frequently does that happen. It's not an often, a thing that happens quite often, and, but that is really the main purpose of what the agenda item is at the end of the meeting. I know something Gary and I talked about, and I think it's something you may be encouraged starting in January of next year, but that's really what that purpose is, is you all sit on, you know, a couple of committees and commissions, and you maybe meet once a month or maybe quarterly, but that's really the purpose of that at the end of every meeting, so...
So actually, I sit on a couple committees, Hutchinson, Housing, Redevelopment Authority, the HRA, and we had, actually had our meeting this morning, so actually, the HRA does take care of park towers, too. That's one of the things, so just a little bit about park towers, they got six apartments for rent opening up yet here, so there are six apartments available in park towers. They do not have an operation specialist right now, the person that takes care, you know, that's in the office down there, but they're looking to hire somebody here shortly. They got some good, good people that applied for it, so they're gonna narrow them down and maybe hire somebody, so... And the other thing that's talked about is actually, there is, now, this is for the month of November, actually, we had twelve new listings for houses in Hutch, and actually there is just thirty houses for sale in Hutch, so...
May recall, you know, a healthy market is a hundred to a hundred and thirty, so...
So, yeah, and average sale price was, you know, this always shocks me, but the average sale price was three hundred and four thousand dollars. You know, so, yeah, so, you know, and, you know, our apartment rate, you know, our apartments for rent, our vacancies are, you know, next to nil, too, so we always kind of look forward in, you know, trying to get more apartments in town. The other one I sit on is Airport Commission, and actually, we're in the process of getting a new FBO, which stands for Fuel Base Operator, that would be taking care of the airport, you know, making sure when planes come in that if they need help with anything with fueling or whatever, so... You know, and the other thing out at the airport, we did get two new hangars built, so... the other thing out at the airport, we did get two new hangars built, so those will be up for rent here, and they're actually oversized from the typical hangars we have that'll accommodate bigger planes that will come in. So, uh, we did get update on the lights out there, the new runway lights, we were shut down for about a month, but we're, the airport's back open and we got nice bright lights now, so... But, uh, that's kinda the committees I sit on, and, and, uh, like Matt said, it maybe starting forward, you know, next month, uh, if you guys could maybe give a short little presentation about the, I know, like Chad, you're on the EDA board, and there, there always has something going on there, uh, when people see stuff moving around, so...
Empty spaces in the incubator.
Yeah, so... But that's all I had, and, uh, everybody have a safe and merry Christmas in your travels, so...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Merry Christmas, sir.
Baby, did you hear me?
Did I?
Gary? Did they change the...